Abdis.
I am here.
Beans.
Here.
Hill.
Here.
Perez.
Present.
Smith.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I'll speak for the ladies and gentlemen. There's a second. I can identify, yes, you can, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, yes, have it, and has approved. Just to answer, we just have to plug.
Where is this person?
I would like to leave just to the flagging of the United States of America and affirmably for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, sure.
I will be refusing myself from consenting to this five point nine and fucking ten.
I shall be, if I stand to meet with them. Okay. On my whole physical presentation.
No presentation, no public comment received on non-agenda items unless there's someone in the room.
Okay, hearing none, any public comments? Hello, hello. Any public comment?
No.
Okay. Onto the informational items, General Manager Kim.
Okay, um, on the general management report, things that are included, yeah, because I wanted to, like, you know about, um, and we'll start with, uh, some of those factors in the, or we don't.
Uh.
As you know, we were talking to, from the district attorney's office, um, about two weeks ago now, uh, and that. So, my sixth, um, about the cleanup, yeah, and reminding us of our responsibilities. Preventing, but, um, what, boy, considering, probably in terms of, uh, flight, uh, responsibility to address homeless encampments, this particular, uh, location was behind the depot on, uh, three part main grand channel, um, right near Long Interstate Eight. And so, um, as you know, uh, we were back to the D, uh, briefly inputted requests, the coincidentally, uh, G had already started cleaning up that encampment. That morning prior to being able to see the, um, the DA's office, so, as you know, it takes about three weeks, um, and even that could be delayed, you know, sack fees, they'll need to help, uh, with enforcement and the removal. Uh, but, you know, our work package would be scheduled, um, in, you know, five and four point two, you kind of see where our entities are, so you always reference that, you get questions, and what we have kind of planned out before cleanups over the next month. Um, like I said, one time, that was delayed, so, uh, Scott, uh, put together an email response back to the DA, uh, and so, sent that over about what we've done, our record on it, uh, our history, three years, um, such that this board adopted to a test night in our cooperation with, um, this is exciting, you know, and on, so, thank Scott for sending that over. Um, after that, uh, email, I was contacted by Scott and we're, um, yeah, offered, you know, the email, uh, to move on with, uh, kind of the term of, uh, with the jeans on, or the DA's office, that if you need further assistance or help, they're appreciative of our interest, they understand, um, what's your needs, uh, as we did, uh, um, patient, the dependence on that particular, um, for the handle, where it is, um. But as you know, they're okay between three or four sites, in fact, yesterday morning, two tents started on our, uh, on site, so we're working on trying to prevent reestablishment, um, that we would press that. And so, I will reach out to, um, the Exxon and establish that relationship when the, this is, you know, we kind of watered it on, and we should, there are no, given this, so we have another, uh, case, uh, so, want to let you know that that's been handled, um, in the chamber for, for the, as you know, so continual group, so, some of your bigger stories, long-term, so.
I'd like to add to that, um, trustee Abdis and I went to go visit, uh, the district attorney two Mondays ago to clean up this mess, and, uh, you know, we shared with him the scope of our duties, and he had very specific questions about what we do here, and who we are, and the scope of our authority. So we filled him in on that, he understood that we are making a genuine effort to clean up the homeless encampments, we cleaned it up, and a week later, now there's two more tents, right, Gabe? Uh, so it's like a never-ending game, but he had some empathy behind that and, uh, offered up a liaison for us, and so we connected, uh, Kevin with that liaison, and, uh, he also asked us to flood us three one one, but after talking to Kevin, that's not feasible, that's not our pathway, we actually have a, a positive relationship because of what Gabe and, and Kevin have nurtured over the years, so we actually have a direct line to PD. And so, uh, that, that wasn't really necessary, everything.
Yeah, would like to add, I mean, I do appreciate, uh, the district attorney's efforts beyond just, obviously with RD one thousand, just, you know, in Sacramento County, I know he's holding, um, obviously, public officials accountable for, you know, this homeless, these homeless issues and how to appropriately, uh, address some of them, and, you know, frankly, I welcome the DA's involvement, I mean, we do have a very significant role, uh, in the homeless basin, and yes, we do have a, a homeless problem, it's not just an RD one thousand problem, obviously, we, it's a team effort. We, we talked through that with the DA, he was very understanding about the fact that, you know, RD one thousand is not a law enforcement agency, we cannot enforce, um, trespass without having law enforcement present. Um, so I very much appreciate the DA, and I think we have, uh, certainly established a good line of, uh, communication, certainly with the liaison, and we need to be continually diligent on this homeless issue. While it is kind of moving people around, I am not a supporter of just allowing camp, encampments to just sit there and fester. Uh, the reality is, um, people do get pushed around, but some of them do get help, that, that, you know, uh, the department, DCR, the city's Department of Community Response does offer services that, for those that are willing to accept it, and my understanding is from that homeless encampment behind Home Depot, at least a few of the, uh, 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 folks there did accept services, and so, you know, I think we continue to do what we're doing, and Gabe appreciate the efforts and extend, obviously, the appreciation to our crews, because, yeah, that is not really in our lane, but it's, it is, right? I mean, it's a problem, and we have to deal with it, and so, it's acknowledged, and our, I think, uh, the efforts of our crews are appreciated, so please extend gratitude there. So, keep doing what we're doing, and, um, continue to build these partnerships with more regional, uh, folks, and, and, uh, look forward to working more with, with the DA, obviously, to, to work on this bigger problem.
My conversation with the DA's on, uh, was in mind, uh, about, uh, how, being about the district and what our responsibilities were, so it's really a conversation, an opportunity to, um, investigate, question the job, then, you know, focus agency on budget control, and, you know, and, um, this, this issue wasn't an issue in twenty seventeen for a few things, and, uh, by the leadership of this board, um, we've committed significant amount of resources, um, at the same price of some of the other activities to do our part in even more than what on their local agencies were doing, so, other group, being proactive to supporting staff, to be, and working together to do our part, so, appreciate that.
Certainly, yes, I.
So, um, I think his name's Ron.
Correct.
Um, right.
It's also the contact in the email that suggests.
Yeah. Wrong.
It's, it's long.
Yeah. But it was, it's, it's actually, um, attended a meeting, um, regional meetings over the past six, seven months, drawn on cases, and on, it's been here, um, and a lot of the issues, or, it's a community group, and they often talk about, uh, these policies, so we did proactive that, and, uh, Lisa, you know, acknowledged that G had been there, that having the opportunity, talking directly to G during these meetings, so down, but, um, for the.
I would just add that, you know, I think it's important also to have a single point of contact in our organization, and it should be you, frankly, I mean, that's not to say that there's more involvement on this issue, but I think we need to, uh, speak with one voice, um, on, on this to the degree that's possible, and so, I would definitely encourage that.
And, um, it's, I was looking back to, it's like, reach out, uh, reach out, or just email, you know, um, get back to that, and start there, and.
Yeah.
We'll, okay, thanks.
Okay.
Um, also, um, yeah, so, we're meeting on the twenty-sixth as well, uh, this, uh, illegal pre, uh, but, because of desire, expertise, and others concede non-governing, it can be seen, had a form of support, so we didn't need to call session about, uh, the issues, the ongoing issues, that, that we're, we're being, uh, based on that feedback, we have the county hoppers, um, yeah, from reports that was, that was, yesterday, comes up on Wednesday, yeah, we'll see, but next, and so I'll bring back to the board, when we hear about that. And other, um, the, the board, state, the district, uh, been working, um, for a long time, and you know, on reach A improvements, um, and something, done, worked for a lot of areas, all, pretty, pretty fast, and every agreement wanted certain, uh, provisions and protections when, or contract come into, or, one B, uh, and one A, along the stretch, so, we think we have what we need for that, um, the contractor has, let us know that they have some places to leave in their schedule, which, um, with this contract here, just on other issues, and feedback from the board, and what projects have we seen that have been done, and, yeah, they're happening now, so, what we're really pushing forward, yeah, um, and for various meetings, it's, but, you know, trying to, but, um, they're initially trying to do it in one construction schedule, starting, this year, after flex season's taken work, three months before first, um, we've expressed some serious concerns about that, and any pickup, pushing for the amen, we want to make sure that they're providing us then, it comes here in place, if the question information, contract, or, are answered at the time of the convention, which we don't initially put on, but just ask the day of the rest of the question. So, what it's really like is they will likely be split to construction season, uh, which benefits us, uh, in the fact that, uh, they're not going to de-commission the entire community at the same time, so we'll have some, some brackets, and limited functionality, but also the bypass, and so that we have, again, we feel working one. So what it means for us is that there's going to be significant traffic and noise, or actually lines to, uh, kind of burn hallway here, and do a detour around, and we're sure, uh, probably down to give the ghost, um, so you won't have access to this building for period of time, and the noise, parking is going to be kind of torn up as well, so, we're looking to, you know, G, um, go off the staff, to, we're actually looking at new suite, there's a venture office space, um, down. Based on, based on district range or something, but it's on public gate rate, um, down between here and, uh, question, so, we'll get some temporary space, also not, you know, boardroom, conference room availability, so, depending, because we get their final schedule, uh, maybe this week is April fifteenth, uh, it's been, kind of, working over there, um, yeah, we're working in term, so, the mail, routing phones from here to there, uh, getting, you know, the print scanner, all the permits coming over there, and so, uh, obviously, we may have some access to the building, but not working.
Okay, couple of thoughts on that, so, uh, relative to the improvements on Reach A, now, my understanding is that, that, that is a critical component of getting to that two hundred year level of, of protection, relative, well, sort of the case for SB five purposes, now, if it's being split in two, you know, SB five requires that by the end of this year, and so my understanding, maybe it's, maybe it's a mistake, or, I think, my understanding was that this reach, you know, needed to be completed entirely for, for those findings to be made for that sort of, so.
It's all made, uh, G or Paul to be, um, to that, but, and then conversations that we had in regard to the two hundred year, I think, or V, uh, application goes in substantial completion, uh, is the target, so, yeah, that's the, the safe question, for, you know, what happens if, and when, um.
So I don't, all the, what do you, yeah, well, I mean, my understanding is, is, I don't think you're going to be done at a certain point, I mean, the, 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 that's, that's, yes, the question, I think, I, you know, the district is working, and, and, it's going to be certified this year, I can pull out the case next, next month, there's a lot of, um, um, look at sites and make sure, uh, in the case part, doing certification, but, uh, I don't think it's going to be done, G, it's going to be filed, it's, like, the state is, is, if, you know, legislation, be sure. Well, I know that there's some bits in the legislation, uh, introduced to extend the deadline, but my understanding was that that was a backstop for making the substantial completion, uh, findings relative to the improvements, and my understanding was that the work long here was that, for that last piece, to make those findings, so, I don't know if that's relatively recent, but this has been split into two projects, two construction seasons, it hasn't been, it hasn't been fully accepted as a, for, this discussion, but. So I guess my only point here is that, I think we as an organization be cognizant of, uh, these deadlines and what needs to happen when, not to say that we don't need to protect our interests, but then, we're a part of a bigger ecosystem, and, yeah, we hope is, and maybe Scott, uh, can comment relative to the legislation extending that, uh, December thirty first date, um, on SB five, but, you know, certainly that would be nice, but I don't know what the timeline for that realistically making its way through the legislature into the governor's stats.
It's, if we, you know, about two years ago, you and I had this conversation, we did, it's, for, you know, deep for this, and, you know, the, the city and county is far as interior, of a certification, and this is our goal, is to never be, you know, the, the roadblocks to meeting that deadline, if you have a, and, this particular project on Reach A, um, does give, if I'm allowing, um, partner, and that, and thanks over, if our unit is not available upon, starting, you know, November first, there's a significant risk, and so we want to make sure that the board understands that this is being taken on, uh, because the performance on, I don't care, of that three and four, uh, foot, and this is the fourth season, uh, and things happen, and so, we, you know, without being planned, you know, one being available, it's, 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 it's bound between.
Yeah, it's good.
I don't want to be, that's our goal, we'll talk, so, provide interior, certification, and make money available for the model, and we should have. So our portion of the ULDC, it's a group, uh, two thousand twenty-five, we're actually working, you know, right now, reporting, uh, programs that have rights, but our portion will be submitted to the county, third hand side, you know, the ULDCs are, so, we're doing, on the other side of things, um, and we can't, certainly, we're stuck with that, with the, you know, legislative process, but, we're going, our portion will be done with the ULDC.
Scott, I have some homework for you, I have some homework for you, so, can you look into the follow-up bill that Eggman was carrying on the extension, because when I had this conversation with Rick two years ago, he said we were on time, and that we didn't really need it, and so now I'm a little worried hearing this from Kevin, that we're, you know, with the timeline coming so closely, like, because I don't know if we were including in that extension when Susan Eggman was, Senator Eggman was around to carry that bill, and that was a year ago, so can you look into that?
We're, we're.
Oh, that'd be awesome, yeah.
So, uh, there have been four legislative attempts to extend the twenty fifty-five, uh, on SB five, uh, the first one, which was eight or eight years ago, that, and, where the street was, uh, all, all three since then have passed, the, the most recent one, and by the way, I would stop for two, that's why I have them really, uh, um, you got, the clients, and, the most recent one was an extension for the same year, public control agencies, Boston project, Western, number, of control agencies, uh, and, so, we're already been extended to twenty thirty, and, uh, this Boston project has been extended to twenty twenty-eight, this bill, all the twenty-four, and, the timing there of both of them relates to our portion, and the focus for, and the fact that the state set value of objection plan, calls for federal cautionary, to get, uh, done, we can't afford to check on, out the, out the, but, we're skiing in the line of twenty-five, and the legislature has said that, so, that bill originally has drafted, but brought on, and as the issue that we include, the list on the space, and, uh, I, I don't think you recall whether it was a future version, or a previous version, but, at one point included, and the reason, in howl, is that the legislature, of these last few bills, has consistently required the local's and use authorities to derive, uh, sharing of this, for any development that's proved behind, in the time that, bill, and the crush, now, from, uh, SB five, the old, plus the limit state liability, and say, you're, um, developing, to get your altitude here, and so what the state's saying is, if we're extended, you know, local, it's already, you share, this is something that is wrong, the second community was not prepared to share in this, and large margins at that time, I think this goes to what both big ones said, the fault in me was the timing, you know, and at that point, the large risks, it's, 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 was not, the project wouldn't be done, but we would have as bills from before, without the as bills, we were worried we couldn't complete the SB five certification, my understanding is that the bills do lose, because there's increased concern risk in this, providing, um, I don't know what that issue, how that issue is being handled, about taking on technical, this liability, I haven't read the, uh, ULDC of that division's absence, or included, um, and that conversation is, uh, where, uh, things are used to talk about, like, and you know, that there was interest on another central element, you know, in that bill, and also, that we, my problem, there are, there is, there are, but there are discussions, so, my sense is, there's no reason that bill will be passing the same formula as the previous one, in fact, the last version of the bill passed, actually, the emergency bill, because we needed to get it passed prior to, to, that, right?
January first, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so, I guess if the, those things tell you one, it's likely to pass the, but all those formula, the last series, during time.
Thanks.
To, uh, we're still moving forward with, um, working as a council member to, um, move forward, uh, our digital, not paper advertising, uh, attempt in the town, only that council members, uh, be, well, uh, if I, there was some, uh, concern, uh, the citizens about doing that, um, that we're working on, or maybe, with that, we're going to get it on, for future state, and, we do have some limited timing here, as we understand, the state staff, working on, uh, in item, in May, or digital, advertising, for, for, uh, state, so, we got it in, uh, prior to, so, we're very hard, you know, push that forward, this, uh, the significant increase in the district's, probably, so. Uh, but, process is starting, uh, is, I, again, reporting, uh, there's targeted dates for various committee meetings, so, that's why I'm reaching out to, uh, the committee members to get, I mean, all those meetings, start personnel, you know, April, uh, and also, probably need to have a second personnel committee, uh, the legitimate GM evaluation, uh, because of, you know, in the last two, three weeks, uh, we have sent out the general manager's language parts to you, yes, so, hopefully get that on, so you guys, start looking on now, going to, have them submit, you know, thirty days, and so, we're starting to do those, and, with our stuff, we. With me, with the committee, I go back, so.
Not to share, Chris Scott's office, so.
Yes, yes, that would be, you know, for that, um, and I see, um, a couple of C A events coming up, there's legislative dates, um, in May, the twenty, twentieth through twenty-first, uh, typically attend those, good programs, so, we, there, and it's annual conference, and moderated, August twenty-fifth through twenty-eighth, so, our, our many trustees, the register, then, uh, and research, and, uh, tell, uh, let me know, let me know, maybe get registration, so, there's early for this, and we do it, uh, soon.
You just said it was.
In August, yeah.
This time, no word?
No. Yeah. That's, yeah.
So, that's all, any questions for the, the rest of the mission, we have a report.
Uh, we on, with our few, process, we're, we're, so, that should, it's, you're in the next two weeks, so, and, um, all of that, okay, uh, don't, it's, I mean, that day was, uh, only, uh, so, so, maybe, we're, we're not, uh, right, so, good, um, that, we, uh, there's, very, 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 sorry, this, anyway.
Any questions, okay, onto District Council's report.
Good morning, um, I need to take some ownership, the way of the, sorry, just, this, uh, if you're going to have it, then, right, if you have, uh, issue. Uh, this week, we're, this, this one, every party last, last month, uh, very, you know, about, um, this, this one, is, the, working on the response, attorney, uh, sections, uh, as Kevin, and she, the DA's on corporate property, and that, third, law, the, the, for me, and the, and, for the attorneys, and my information, person, Scott, or, that group, and, third, actually, there's just been response to the question, for us, to report, either, of, the, sure, group, all, ask, whether, all my contact, or I see, we started down, or, as with long-term, very separate experience, or. And, I really hadn't, but, saw two things in the last few days, uh, related, one is that, the, the administration had consciously not done any, like, off student, uh, not, conscious, much, large, large, that's, at the administration, uh, planning, increased spending, for, that's, but, just, this week, the board announced, uh, they can, all, uh, deferred items, the program, can, uh, get paid through September, and, and, for additional, so, now, and, those three percent push reduction, for, um, and we're, you know, calling yesterday, that, there were, by, example, well, people, that had, who are, the real state group, but, anytime you want to make a, 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 policy on the state, so, for example, what we say to, party, thousands, you say, uh, we need to apply for, those acres over there, for our, and, we find, and, where we find the F P, and we say, well, these will be easier, but, that's, 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 that group has a six-month processing, well, they're producing themselves from twelve, twelve, ten, it doesn't, now, seven, eight, on processing, so, I'm starting to see those, and, that's, for the operation, or, I actually, the, uh, those, my, yeah, that'd be a true question.
Here we go. Okay. Okay, off the consent calendar, I'd like to separate, so we'll vote on items five point one through five point eight first.
I'll move those through those items.
Can I get a second? Seconded by trustee Baines. All those in favor say aye. All those oppose, you guys have it.
I need to step out.
I think it's five point one through five.
In fact, I'm interested in your report. Um the one is big for the insurance renewal in working with our program. We actually have direct client relationship now with the provider, they don't view for any other clients, so. Join was able to negotiate that we reviewed insurance renewal about six percent. Every other client they have in the state of California, so it's thirteen fifteen percent. And we stay on for three, so they did all now three up and we have really good insurance.
Let him get some help. Okay, uh once you consent items, uh okay, so items five point nine and five point seven, can I get a motion?
So.
I have a motion by trustee Perez, the second by trustee Hill. All those in favor say aye, oh, might as Nick. What I.
There's five nine by ten.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, you guys have it. Items five point nine and five point ten are approved. Nick, come back.
We have a few questions for you. Why are you always smiling?
Good question.
Onto item six point one, the C S D A and call for nominations. Further board, anyone interested or? Okay, we'll take no action. Onto item six point two. Uh reviewing consider authorizing the general manager to submit a letter of support for Senate Bill four ninety six. Oh.
Yeah, sorry. So we're ready for the Senate package. Good, yeah, so um it's past due coverage issues and it's be, you know, more few if you work with them all the C S D A's. And we get to this, you know, take action, agrees, but um there's other questions on the four ninety six.
I'd like to open for public comment, hearing none. I have a motion from trustee Hill, can I get a second? I have a second from trustee Baines, all those in favor say aye. All those oppose. You guys have it, item six point two is approved. Now six point three, it's an informational item, no action. Scott, you're up.
We're gonna stand Scott.
Hey, girl.
Actually, you're kind of branded today. Not unintended.
Yes, one said, I think I'll have to work at a different front than in our. And I said, I can apparently keep my brand.
Yeah, you'd have to change your wardrobe.
Uh so this is just a quick update on my informational session on some obligations. See, I've seen here, this is a little bit of precision, I haven't taken the president. But these occasional useful uh I'm running for the overview, I have. Twelve slides, so it gives about fifteen minutes. And I'll unite all due to the state law that's requiring the arrangement of training. Uh that's the uh one, two, three, four, twelve, thirty, four training that puts the role we make as a result of special districts. Even under that. As.
Is that you or?
I think it's certainly others. Yeah, and that reserves any other here, I like the question. So that's reading, those dreams good and uh really recommend you be shaped of. Today I'm just gonna get three different areas, so I'll put an update on. And uh the last sentence there is not intended to get into more business. Uh is to recognize that reality is a lot of situations, fire center. And uh that's what we're here for, as agents counsel to check the district that applies to us as well. So I um this slide from a slide gap with the firm uses, yes, you actually might be pretty more training. Do it on the to the learning needs, I just picked slides out. This really to me picks up important categories of others work for us, use uh for directors of agencies. Focusing on trust working as uh reducing liability, our focus on that today. Uh obviously, the government's responsibility and general. And today I'm really gonna have three particular things, I'm gonna do a brief focus on the ground case. Uh the act of the all of the heat, I'm gonna briefly conflicts of interest and the. A little reminder on why we focus on that and then find the article about thirty one thousand policy ten thirty that resets. Which the four page policy that the board is previously adopted. The first on the ground case, the basic focus of ground case is every angel of public uh the large public has behind us. Uh but you know, if people care about energy, they shall, and it's our job to make sure that those conversations are open and public and that people can engage. There are some exceptions uh for closed session, and that's where I thought maybe for a little bit of uh mind focus. Uh all closed sessions are topics that are expressly authorized in the statute, you can't just choose, do something in a closed session. Where in a closed session, we must describe on the agendas, the public still knows what we're talking about generally. He can come on in advance, uh we have verbally announced the right of closed session. And then if actions taken, um depending upon the action might be required in accordance with public. And all confidential conversations are very confidential, talking about the closed session, it remains a closed session item. As Kevin mentioned, the people committee, we determined before meeting, there was a closed session there. These majority were there, the topics of the closed session remain confidential, we don't talk about them outside of session. Also, the ground case, uh there's this issue relating to E M's and how you communicate for each other. Uh and essentially frankly relates to social media as well. Because would you want to be careful, you're doing is that you're not creating a serial meeting, not creating a conversation amongst trustees. On a topic that occurs outside of court. It's one thing that nobody sends you an email, says, are you coming for a holiday brunch, and you reply on say yes. And no one can argue that's the conversation. Uh but you have to be careful on various subjects, so if, for example, Kevin were sending you out to all of you raising that topic. And you do a few replies, all now you can go for each other, and that's where the risk is. You kind of have been cases in which people have been liable to traffic violation, it's all that. Take the social media, one of you takes a position on social media, something that relates to the district, and a bunch of you like it or pump stuff in. Well, you're communicating your paper that, and you're creating a serial meeting through social media as well. Do you want to be careful about that? Second topic is finding interests, um this is a portion that was already in there, and we have this interest, which are raised all out of purpose. People's actually else uh and here the focus is the public officials, expecting decision based solely on public interest. Not through a personal financial. Uh you all fully applying your manual form of seven hundreds, I'll remind you, we're coming up on the form of seven hundred deadline soon. Have people planned it?
Yeah, it's the first.
Yeah, first, uh and so the form is designed to balance you a public. It's designed to make sure among those other interests as uh for some quite complicated that finally certified the business there. Like, you know, I made a decision years ago, I have to file them as a attorney for a public agency. That often is invested mutual terms, and it's the result of an early lower half of the board. But if you want to personalize a stock, you either report it, you know, businesses, you report it. So all this information is available, and I have seen the F P D C. During enforcement, I've seen where people join the agency, take your final, assuming office. And they send a letter saying that, well, within their days, we're finding prevailing files. So they take it serious, so they can review the sure to find. Uh the political performing is the basis for the form seven hundred requirements, the various other requirements. It states that you have this span, you know, property and personal finances. It also relates to, yes, there's a minimalist exception for small things. But if someone's inviting you to go on a private jet to a regular island, that's going to be a good, has to be reported. Unless it wishes for justice against. Uh this is a really useful chart uh on this issue of uh political uh leading to conflicts. So there are two legal bases, provision of parties, the political party, and inspection ten ninety. Which is a specific code section of the civil. And. Political performing applies to any or any of a certain uh where it can apply to contracts. So a huge screen of contract. And it really relates to what the consequence violation is, or penalties for members for performance. Whereas for ten ninety, you're remember half the contract void. And the center of the middle one, uh the political performing. The neutral member must refuse to herself, like you did. Under ten ninety, in the contract, now the here either to refuse to herself. So we have to be really careful on ten ninety issues. That was involved, we got the day we're making. So but on ten ninety issue, there actually have workings in force, probably during, designed for the horn. And um last is the policy, I'm thirty, I printed a copy out, it's in. Or you're. You're just kind of asking, okay, so remember that. Yeah, okay, uh if you often know where your copy is, you might be copying the policy or look, I'm sure we have it. Working for you.
The ten ninety, you have the C S D A example.
Yeah, okay, and so it was documented over years ago, and it feels to be different categories. Uh that building needs professional duty, service land, duties, physical responsibilities, appreciation of duty to, but. And rest, I think a lot of things are self monitoring, but I thought I would just get a few due as examples. Uh this theater reads the presentation on gifts, you have to be careful about that. Uh it near reads the issue of, you know, your real meetings, they call it age, middle out of meetings and discussions. You want to be careful about that, but make sure that your your forum is formed, you never want to have more people involved in any sort of conversation. You never want to have serials resulting in four people be connected. The other thing here, I think, is a good reminder is ten thirty point one F. And it's using for title, and when you contact child communications. Uh it's very important that you be careful not to use your title, which communicates to somebody else. That includes official vision, which is different in action. And to place support, you see man and native risk, uh really great to misunderstand things about now the title is. And I'll give you a crazy sounds of all the time it's normal, but it's the kind of thing I worry about and why I try to. Reach your office. So I got a call from a guy who's been here for years, he's seventy five years old, he's a retired doctor. He calls me in the morning, he's at six thirty in the morning somewhere, banking on his work, he's down the insurance process there. And he gets served. It's like the top, it is this, I mean, third, very cheap complaints. There's four children, um I mean, four, not many four, he has problems. Uh he um has cancer, he has lung cancer. And he's in his teens and believes he got lung cancer because he was a trial winner. And early trial law has that incident, so that three weeks ago. And so lawsuit is against every employer who ever had really construction work. And if early wilshun that was ever one that had those construction companies. Well, why you can find out in a search, the retired doctor, he didn't own any colleagues, he didn't have a charge company. Was starting a charge company, okay? And the construction company was, it was a good life, it was jobs, was a lot of things, it's quite obvious. Well, it turns out they have had sold the company to a larger company, but it never loads down a legal. And so that dollars, doctor gets a vital in the state, or just to that email. You owe this money for this petition, and you. So now he's like, well, we want to close this down. So he takes the form, closes it down, he signs to close it out. Well, no, it was random, it's good, he had to sign it as having some authority. So he signed the line, the full direction. And he closed it down. The lawyer was on this form of the state, so they're suing, they need to correct, they're closing that company. And it's twenty eight hundred dollar potential, and he'll be associated with this business damage. So it's just one of those things where you never know how you just make or where you put a name on what you sign it, and the potential liability, you know, out of it. The only thing when he's not even had a should be an issue, the only thing some lawyer would do so ridiculous if you try to capture. Yeah, for this liability, but something goes, and so this is where you really have to be careful, that's how you about the district. So I'll write letter three avenue, sign it, Tom Gilmore. I'm okay, that's me, Tom Gilmore, R D one thousand, the first year I got a call.
Well, you got bigger problems than your own name, but.
When I was right, it's happening, it's not really. So last time, yeah, so the right, you would write Tom Gil, R V one thousand. There's one of work design, you're sending a letter. But if you're somebody who might have been asking you, should I?
I sent email from the R V one thousand email. It's pretty fine.
Cause that makes it look like it's an R V one thousand. And suddenly there are all sorts of things that get your potential claims for workers, um like the lawyer, insurance, and all that kind of stuff, so. It it sounds silly, but it really matters. Uh that's my last one, so any questions? And hopefully this is what we want to be for the president, we can repeat occasionally, it does quite well.
I think it's a good reminder, Scott, I mean, you kind of take some some of this stuff, not for granted, you know. You've been on, if you're new, you're not sure, if you've been on a long time, you get a little complacent, so I I do appreciate. Um reminder we do have the annual ethical for the every two years.
Yes, here we do one, two, three, four.
Yeah, yeah.
And we we tried to. We yeah, I said last year, um your reminder in the public. You know, and so you should have gotten a big six years looking at it at a time, pay your time to invest or two. Uh providing these skills, you know, but um so that was processed within professional risk, we have overlap uh sometimes, so.
Don't forget your social practice.
Yes, and also the.
We're pretty here for us to treat.
Well said, council.
I'm glad you touched on the ten ninety because only I need to know the details. That's for virtue, that's the best way to get three square and two and a cut, you know.
Yeah, it's a good reminder on uh behavior as an elected, you know, yeah. It really matters, he how we behave here, but also how we behave uh in the outside. And full disclosure, I don't know anybody that owns a yacht, so. So I should just suggest to.
Form seven thirty is the April first. Form seven hundred, you know, the. He's been scrubbing down uh. Pride with the form seven here and and uh like we fill out. And if it's the change, and it's muted, box series, I would on.
But you will send out an email revising this, so link yourself with it.
So I had the more certain you can joke, you're not invited anywhere, does that mean that?
It's safe here, okay, that's fine.
Okay, and then if I just recently did one, do I need to do another one first?
When when do you tell me?
December ninth.
Yeah, we're spending like five months of seven nineteen for this, I'm very focused.
Yeah.
But it's the best, well, something that has a point, and we're finding. It's natural, they. It's natural, so you're, you're not, you're not only the one to be, it's, um.
Oh, it's courage.
It's a weird, because you're reporting, because it includes against that.
Okay, right.
Unless you're new, registered, yeah, that would be kind of cool.
I agree.
Good, all right, thank you.
That was a good reminder to the, yeah.
Okay.
Um, one last thing on, on, Scott, presentation, um, and responding to the emails that I sent out to all of you. Uh, I did implement a change about two years ago, I meant, like, or if you had a former trustee, you'd like to do that, and they kept reminding, but that's why it seemed weird, it says, you know, email from, to having lines, particularly for the court, not the, this game. So that's why I moved in, for that, for, for.
Okay, I was expecting your, I guess, you, you, you were attending, you had, they, they, how we, the, the personal meeting. For best.
But even in, we'll call it another personal meeting.
And that's the. And there's a picture.
So.
Back again.
You know. Cause what happens in non-seconds?
We stay in session.
Isn't, isn't, isn't the present prerogative, though, Scott? Right, it's not prerogative, if you want a motion, give it a motion.
I just want to make sure she knows that it's non-seconds, it's, that's mine.
Would you leave it, cause you're on the clock, and with, um.
We come from back, it's talking points, and I started, that's why, uh.
Who is it? Oh, hey, well, it's metal, that's got it.
One, two, one, I was, my time is, no.
It's, it's not global, too, very soon.
I have a good reminder.
All right, I'm gonna end, I'm.